It is. It's a very good thing.
Bob Rose?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And really interesting.
Yeah.
And the bishop was a big... However, like all batteries these days, these have to be disposed of in a special way.
Of course.
They would?
They have to be disposed.
Yeah, we keep all of our old batteries in a sort of big plastic...
Hello.
And I was interested to see that David...
When it gets half-full and we set it outside this one, we start to...
Up where we are, they require a plastic bag. So I have a plastic bag in the garage. I chuck it in there where the bag gets full, out it goes.
Very well, thank you.
It's amazing how many batteries we use. It's amazing how many batteries we use.
Yes, I know.
Flashlight batteries, pin light batteries, little AAA batteries.
Batteries for my mouse, I have.
For the mouse, yeah.
Yeah. Trying to think of what we just changed, batteries.
He's great with his kids.
Oh, I know. It was a book that we bought our grand... For when our grandkids... It's a big first look like this.
Yeah.
And so it's got like a hundred different birds. Like you press... There's a little panel over there and if you press the button, the number, it'll actually have this bird song, which is pretty cool. Kids love it. They could spend hours and hours matching the bird.
I'm not great at that. I'm okay. I'm learning.
I gave my daughter, when she was pregnant, I gave her a birthday card that said, "Have you ever watched a movie 987 times?" And it opens it up and it says, "You will." And there's a little kid there saying, "One more time, one more time." And she has... Our grandson comes over four days a week and he just, he's got to see it again and again and again.
Our grandkids, they kind of think it's wild. The little ones, you know, every single day, twice a day, and never get tired.
We got a Christmas card that had animated Frosty the Snowman on it.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the March 21st, 2011 Washtugle City Council meeting. Ask you to please rise and join us in our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Jennifer, could you call the roll for us, please?
Councilmember Coeston?
Present.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Here.
Councilmember McDaniel?
Here.
Councilmember Delivar?
Present.
Councilmember Greenly?
Here.
Councilmember Morris?
Here.
And Councilmember Russell.
Have we heard anything from Councilmember Russell? Are there any amendments to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we excuse Councilmember Russell.
Second.
Does any... Has... Jennifer, have we heard from him?
I have not heard from him.
I would submit that an excusal is not in order. I know the rules that you've had in place and the rules that we've passed, have them contacting myself or Jennifer or Dave to let... You could certainly suspend your own rules if you'd like to, but you've spelled out the reasons for excuses.
That certainly has been the policy. And, for example, if he shows up in a few minutes, then...
Record will certainly reflect that.
Okay.
Any amendments to the agenda? Okay. Any correspondence?
No.
Okay. And public comments? Anyone in the public this evening that would like to address the council? Yes.
Hi, I'm Margaret, 2715 Northwest 34th Circle in Camas. And the reason that I came today is because I attended the CTRAM board retreat that they had recently and then also the last CTRAM meeting. And the cities of Camas and Washtugle, along with the other small cities, are represented on that CTRAM board. And a big decision is coming up for the CTRAM board, and that's whether they'll put a vote on light rail to the people or not. And so I just wanted to... I have the minutes from the September 14th meeting you can obtain from their website, and I brought a copy. And I just wanted to highlight some things about that in reading those minutes. The motion that was made was this. Steve Stewart motioned and Bill Ganley seconded that the CTRAM Board of Directors declares its intent to place a ballot major on the November 8th, 2011 general election ballot with two distinct questions. The first was for a sales... is for a sales tax 0.2% increase to fund bus and paratransit needs. And the second is a 0.1% sales tax increase to fund the operations and maintenance cost of light rail as a part of the Columbia River Crossing project and the capital and operations maintenance of a fourth plane bus rapid transit project. Okay. But at the retreat, they talked about reconsidering that vote to the people. And there are some important parts in the minutes here that I think that you should be aware. At any rate, I think you should be informed and have an opinion that you relay to the Camas/Washtugle representative. According to the CTRAM minutes, if the vote occurs prior to July 2012, the vote must take place throughout CTRAM's entire service area. But if it takes place after July 2011, 2012, as they're currently discussing, CTRAM can form a smaller sub-district within the current service area and conduct the vote within the sub-district only. So that's a huge difference in the voice of the people being heard in Clark County. And no, I don't have any information on what any proposed sub-districts are or if they've already been formed. That's information that I'm trying to find out, but I would think that would be of interest to you because it has a difference than basically what you're... By holding the vote this year, more Clark County residents will have a say in this important piece, which by their own measure is a part of the Columbia River Crossing project. If they're going to build a light rail station, that's a construction only. The funding is countywide. That's all of us, every taxpayer in the district. And I believe something like mass transit, it should be subject to a vote. In fact, the law requires a vote. But there is this big distinction, this big difference between this year and next year that I wanted to make you aware of. Also, there's some...
Margaret, I'm going to need you to finish up.
Okay. So, and then the other discussion they were having is, you know, it's going to cost money for an expert review panel. And will the CTRAM pay it or will the state? Well, the CTRAM has 29 million in reserves, and the state is just getting further in the red. So, you know, at any rate, that's something that is also discussed in these minutes that I wanted to bring to your attention. And they also have a really handy guide here that you can get from CTRAM that explains their services. For example, in Camas, we have a commuter option, and you don't here in Washtugle. And I'm not sure why that is, but that might be something you'd want to be interested in knowing for your residents because it is a convenient service like a van pickup, and it connects then to the bus. And it's very handy for people, a lot of people, to use it. It's a really popular service in Camas. So I don't know if you could get that here. Maybe it's a matter of advocating for it. So all... This is mine, but I just want you to let you know, you can get this from CTRAM, anybody. And it basically explains really all of their services really well. So who would I turn this in to? Okay?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And Jennifer, if you would, mark the record that Councilwoman Russell is here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My apologies. I was having automobile problems.
Any other members of the public wishing to address the council this evening?
Yes, Don Boland, 32934 Southeast 20th Street. And I would just like to endorse what the lady said. I would like to hear the council take a position on which way they stand on this issue. And I would also like to have it published in the paper to inform the constituents. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Barbara, yes?
One of the things can... Barbara Curry, 303 Love Street, apartment 4, Washtugle. One of the things that you also do need to know is that there is another proposed... I don't know what's in the papers. I'm just making sure that everyone knows. There is a proposed fare increase coming up in September also with CTRAM. And I believe that the commuter service that the lady was discussing is what's called a connector. And if I'm wrong, I stand corrected. And if we're talking about the same thing, the reason we have that in Camas and don't have it in Washtugle is because Washtugle has a bus route. Camas does not. The connector is what serves to get people from here to there, even though there's no bus route there anymore. So if we want to do away with our bus route in Washtugle, which I frankly don't, because I like, to an extent, the way that CTRAM is operating the way it is because we have a bus route, we can have a commuter or connector service. But it does sometimes make it convenient. For example, it doesn't run on weekends. Buses do run on weekends. And it would make it awfully inconvenient if you didn't... If you had to go to work on a Saturday morning and you took the bus, but you couldn't go to work anymore because there was no way to get there, because you couldn't run. That's it.
Thank you, Barbara. Anyone else from the public wishing to address the council? Yes.
My name is John Wyden. I live at 36710 Southeast 20th Street, Washtugle. I'd like to address the council about this communication I received involving the Fourth of July celebration. And I guess from what I gather, I talked to the executive director of the Port of Camas/Washtugle, and he indicated to me that this was more or less initiated by the city of Washtugle. And I'd like to tell you that I've been navigating the river for over 50 years. I have two slips in the marina and am a pretty avid boater and fairly familiar with the river. And I believe this is not such a good idea because there are 350 slips in the marina. The vast majority of those boats are gasoline-operated. As it stands now, many people, I would guess thousands of people, come to Cottonwood Beach or William Clark Park to attend the celebration, which I usually take my boat up and anchor like many people do. And it's a fabulous show, and I think it's a great thing for the community. I understand that you might want to have an event at the port. And I'm certainly... I'm a big fan of the port. I go to most of the port meetings. I have a keen interest in the port being successful. But shooting off fireworks near all those boats with gasoline, and I don't know if you're familiar, but generally speaking, Army Corps of Engineers, which regulates the river, it's a computer-controlled river, tries to drop the river right about the Fourth of July so that people can get out on the beach and, you know, enjoy the weekend. Well, there's a gravel bar directly across from the marina. There's a red marker. And that gravel bar is fairly close to the marina itself. The channel, there's a channel marker just on the end of Lady Island. So the tugboats and commercial vessels that you can't block come right through that area. And they run 24/7. It doesn't matter what, you know, holiday or not holiday, they're commercial vessels, barges. I think shooting off fireworks there, one thing, it diminishes the ability for the people on Cottonwood Beach to really come down with the families and have the kids and play in the water all day and then have a fabulous display, which I really appreciate. And I think everybody really appreciates the Washtugle really stepping up and doing that for our community. But moving it down there, you're going to have fireworks, depending on which way the wind went. 350 slips. Some of them are covered, some aren't. Several slips, of course, cannot be covered. And you have the possibility of incendiary devices coming down on fiberglass boats. If you've ever seen something like that catch on fire, it's almost impossible to put out. And the people up at William Clark Park would have a much less opportunity to view the fireworks. And I just think those reasons make it unsafe. Parking at the marina on the Fourth of July, even for the people that like to get in their boats and go up and anchor, if you've ever been there on the Fourth of July, if you don't get there early, you're not going to park. Now, the executive director has told me that they're going to open up an area of Hamilton Lumber to have the excess parking. And that may be okay for excess parking. And as I say, I'm certainly not against inviting people down to what I think are wonderful parks. Wonderful marina is a wonderful thing. But to have the fireworks there, I think is going to cause a safety problem. It's going to... Fewer people will be able to enjoy the show. And I would really appreciate it if nothing else, move the barge up in that area between Hamilton Lumber and William Clark Park. Then you might have an opportunity for, you know, all of the crowds to see it. My best choice, if I could encourage you, would be to go back to the way it was. Because if you've ever seen it, it's a wonderful, wonderful thing for our community. But the barge right down there, right by that marina, if the Army Corps of Engineers, like they typically do, will lower that river for the Fourth of July, that barge can only go so far from where that marina is. And, you know, we're not even allowed to barbecue with Coast Guard-approved barbecues in the marina. And here you're going to have a fantastic pyrotechnic display, which I think may be asking for a little bit of trouble. I mean, I can just see that there could be a possibility for problems with that. So if this isn't absolutely set and concrete, I would really encourage you to, my first recommendation, to go back to the way it was. And if not, at least move that barge up so you could have the people both at the parks, at the marina, and at William Clark Park enjoy the show. It's a wonderful thing that you do. I'm very pleased that you do it. But I just think some, maybe some more thought could go into this, and hopefully you might reconsider, you know, the current plan as proposed here. And I thank you very much. If you have any questions?
Thank you, John.
If not, thank you very much for the opportunity to address you. Appreciate it.
I certainly want to make sure... I know we've got some communications from Dr. Barton over the weekend as well. The one, the channel is not open and never has been during the Fourth of July. The Coast Guard actually closes the channel down even where the barge itself has been. The Coast Guard has already looked at the plan. That was one of the portions that we put forth to see if it was even feasible for us to do it. They had no problems with it whatsoever. The fire department has looked over the plans and was actually integral in that. Will actually be putting together a secondary fire barge, I guess for all intensive purposes, for it to be down there with a generator and pump system in cooperation with the port and do a little training that same day as well. So I certainly want to make sure that the council and the public understands that the first things that were discussed in the early meetings were the safety concerns and the parking concerns and looked over those with the individuals involved to make sure that we weren't putting forth something that wasn't even going to be achievable before we started. So the fireworks themselves will not be in the marina. They'll be clear over as close as they can get to the Oregon shore of the Columbia River. So it's out 500 feet off of the ramps, I think, is the designated point for them. But John, thank you very much. Anyone else from the public wishing to address the council?
With that, we'll move to the consent agenda. The consent agenda this evening comprised of the council minutes of March 7th, 2011, the council workshop minutes of March 14th, 2011, the regular accounts payable claims in the amounts of $149,278.69, and also accounts payable claims in the amount of $90,788.28, Agenda Bill 4211, a professional service agreement with Wallace Engineering for Zone 4 Reservoir Project Construction Phase, and Agenda Bill 4311, a five-year lease agreement with Coptronic for a City Hall copier, scanner, and printer.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to our request that we pull item number five and put it under New Business.
Okay. Any other changes?
With that change, I ask unanimous consent that we approve the consent agenda.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. And Mrs. Forsberg, could you take item number five, the five-year lease agreement?
Mr. Mayor, council. Staff is submitting a five-year equipment lease from Coptronic for a new copier for City Hall use at 1701 C Street. The copier will place the current machine, which is over 10 years old and has exhibited operational failure for the last several months. Staff recommends leasing this copier for five years. Leasing the copier will be less expensive than the current maintenance agreements that we have on the two current copiers. The end of five years, the lease expires and the copier is the city's property. And once we agree to the terms of the lease, we will be obligated to the terms whether we pay it off early or not. So we do pay for interest for the full term. Another option that we do have is to purchase the copier outright, but that would require a budget amendment. So staff is recommending that we stick within the approved budget and lease the copier for five years. So the recommended action is to authorize the mayor to sign the municipal value lease agreement and the CTX sales order agreement for the copier to be used at City Hall.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to council discussion?
Mr. Mayor, the reason I wanted to have a discussion about this is because there are those two options about the purchase versus the lease. And I wanted to make sure we at least discussed it here tonight. If we did purchase it, the estimated savings, from what I can understand, is $3,500 over five years.
Correct.
Which, you know, it's not exactly going to change the shape of our budget overall, but it still is a savings of $3,500. And if I understand correctly, then the service... I mean, versus say they would maintain the service or servicing of the copier even if we did buy it?
Correct. The maintenance agreement stays regardless of if we lease or purchase.
From my perspective, it might make more sense for us to go ahead and purchase it. And I know this might... would change what we'd have to do with the budget. However, it would make good long-term sense, and I yield the floor.
Other council comments? Okay. I've got a motion and a second to authorize the mayor to sign the municipal value lease agreement and the CTX sales order agreement for the copier to be used at City Hall. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Okay. Agenda Bill 4411, a surplus resolution. Chief Mitchell?
Thank you, Mayor, council. The agenda item you have today before you this evening is resolution to tweak Claire Shaka, one of our canine dogs, as surplus. And presently, the Washtugle Police Department utilizes two canine dogs that are trained for narcotic scent detection. And with recent changes in the law regarding search and seizure, the use of those two dogs has diminished greatly. And along with that, with some of the changes that we made internally and changes in staffing levels, it's been necessary to move Detective or Officer Akins into the detective position, who was Shaka's handler. So the decision was made to surplus Shaka. That still leaves us with one narcotic dog. The fact that we'd have one narcotic dog will not hamper our ability to use that dog locally and will save the cost to the city for the added expenses in food and veterinary care as well as handler time. The recommended action would be to read the resolution by title only and to pass and post the resolution in the normal manner.
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that we read the resolution by title only.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Just for the record, we did modify the resolution that's in the agenda packet. So we'll be using the one that's been modified and handed out to council. That's a resolution declaring Washtugle canine Shaka as surplus and authorizing Shaka's disposition to another municipality.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post the resolution in the usual manner.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pass and post the resolution in the usual manner. Council discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I just... This is a little nitpicky thing, and I just wanted to make sure we're okay with this because the resolution we passed tonight is going to go on the record and whatnot. I have no problem with the motion itself, but in that first sentence, the word disposition just seems like it might not be the right word. I don't know.
The previous one that was in the record said sale, we're not going to sell our sold dogs. So that's why I put disposition. If you can come up with a better term, I'm all... That did occur to me too, as I was dictating that. I don't want anybody to think we're disposing of her in an inhumane way.
Exactly.
The fact is, is there's interest from another municipality and that's for use of the drug dogs.
Would transfer work? Transfer to?
Second.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I move that we change or I should say, strike the word disposition and insert the word transfer.
That's fine. I can live with that.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to amend the ordinance, as so read. Any council discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, just...
Yep.
Don, I have a question for you. On the third paragraph, the city now has acquired another canine?
Yeah, correct.
That's not what happened.
No, we still... We had to. And Shaka was actually the second dog that came in.
If it makes a difference to you.
But she was not replaced by another dog coming in. That clears it up.
She was the second one that came in.
She is the second one that came in.
It kind of needs to be straightened, just for historical reasons.
For historical reasons, maybe it needs to be changed. I'm not sure. But I know that we haven't acquired another dog.
We have not.
What about the city now has two dogs? And it is then, let's see, two dogs and it's unnecessary for two dogs to that purpose in the Washtugle Police Department?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we strike the word acquired in the third paragraph.
About acquired. If we strike acquired.
Second.
That's fine.
Well, leaving the another in there implies that we have two. And then it's also further noted that we have two. So if this motion carries, then it would read, and whereas the city now has another canine for that purpose and it is unnecessary to have two dogs to serve that purpose, it seems like it would...
That works.
Okay. Seemed like a simple resolution?
Who did we have for motions and seconds on that?
Del... Michael? Delivar is first, I second.
Okay. I've got a motion and a second to, in the third paragraph, we have to strike the word acquired. Council discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, Dave?
It breaks my heart to dispose of Shaka, or pardon me, to transfer Shaka, even to another police department. But what really breaks my heart is the fact that recent court decisions have limited our use of resources like Shaka in the... one of the most significant battles that we fight today, and that's the battle against illegal drugs. I don't know what we can do about that at this level. But is there any kind of advocacy that through the police department level, with the chiefs in this region, that you can raise the issue?
We could certainly try through WASP, but this decision actually came out of a case in Arizona, and it was a Supreme Court case, so...
It was US Supreme Court.
I'd say that's pretty definitive.
Yeah.
But I... Again, I think the feds are tying our hands in this case, and I'm sad to see that. I think you're doing the right thing.
I agree. Thank you.
I just don't like it. Thank you.
I don't like it either.
I'm sorry for the position that the feds have put you in. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Other questions or comments on the amendment itself to the resolution?
Amendment itself? No. No.
Okay. Again, I've got a motion and a second to amend the resolution in the third paragraph, striking the word acquired. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We still have a live motion on the floor with a second to pass and post the resolution as amended twice in the usual manner. Council discussion? Jennifer?
Yes. My question is for Chief, do we have a home for Shaka yet?
There is another police agency that is interested in Shaka. So... And once that comes through, then I can go ahead and mention who it is. But...
Okay.
They are interested in her, and I should know something definitely this week.
Thank you.
Once we declared her surplus, now the process moves forward, correct?
Correct.
Other council comments? Okay. I've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Motion carried. Chief, a little bit in answer to Councilman Shoemaker's question, though, you had a little activity over the weekend?
Yes, we did. We actually served a drug search warrant on 500 block of Sixth Street over the weekend. As a result of that search warrant, that was actually, we received a tip, and then we were working with the Drug Task Force, and we arrested two individuals that were dealing heroin, methamphetamine. They are also charged with intent to deliver on those items as well as possession of cocaine and drug paraphernalia. So, you know, we've done a lot of drug work year-to-date, most of it has been with marijuana grows. But this is the first time, I think, this year for the dealing heroin.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
That ends the business portions of the agenda. And a second opportunity for anyone in the public that would like to address the counsel? Martha?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. And also thank you, Mayor, for your response to my email in regards to the Fourth of July. It was quite detailed, and that's what I want to comment on. Surprise, surprise. I was surprised to learn that this process was so far ahead without the public's knowledge. They didn't know anything about this. And I'm thinking some council members also were taken a bit back that didn't know about this change. And I know sometimes things sound like such a good idea up front, and that people get enthusiastic and they want to put it forward, and they think this is great for our community. And yet, when you're a government entity, part of that process, I would hope, is that you say, oh, by the way, public, what do you think at the beginning? Because so many things get missed. No one can be an expert at every aspect of this process. And there's so many public members that have knowledge of what this could be like. Why not ask them? Why not put it out there? Why wait till it gets so far out and then people have misinformation? I think there's a contradiction between Hamilton's being a parking spot, Hamilton's not being a parking spot. You can see the fireworks, you can't see the fireworks. All of that, regardless, I mean, you can come up with a thousand things, but by not putting it out there to the public, you miss your opportunity to make sure there's no rumors, you get accurate information, post it on the city's website, put it on your calendar. There isn't anything on any calendar. The way I found out was I got a letter soliciting myself as a sponsor for this event. And I thought, what event? I didn't know. And so did a lot of people. And so I'm speaking for myself, and yet I have heard from several people that they were surprised that this wasn't put out into the public sooner. If it's a great idea, put it out there. Thank you.
Thanks, Martha. Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Richard?
Richard Hamby, 37015 Southeast Gibson Road, Washego. I'd heard about the Fourth of July fireworks proposal, kind of just had been rumors, I guess like Martha said. And I figured when it came up for discussion anywhere, and I don't always come here, but I'm always at court meetings, and I figured that I expressed the concerns that I had about the issue. And it seems like that, you know, there hasn't been an opportunity to do that, so this must be a, it seems like to me there's many things to be concerned about. A big one being that that Marina area is already overused on that day. And I certainly appreciate the desire to highlight that part of our community and draw attention to the businesses that are there or could be there in the future. But it seems to me that trying to crowd too many people into an already crowded space on that particular day may not give the positive impression that you're hoping for. At the same time, I've been in this community a long time, almost 50 years ago. I remember when Hathaway Park was the place where the fireworks were set off from and didn't burn too many places down. But that was really a big part of, it was actually a real community event. Everybody showed up there. And I see that the tradition that's been started out in recent years with the events being centered at Captain William Clark Park kind of gives that community opportunity, a place where families can go and spend the day, spread out, kids can play. And so I'm concerned that this proposal really draws the attention away from there and is likely to really draw the community spirit out of this event. It may be good for businesses. I'd really like it to see it be good for the community. I have a little two-year-old grandson, well, will be, will be two years old on this next coming Fourth of July. And I've been looking forward to bringing him to our community celebration. I'm not sure that, that, I don't think I will this year if this is what's going to happen. We'll see how it turns out and see if it's really worth coming to for when he lives out in town. So I would like to think that it's, if it's a very, very done deal, then I'll wait and see what happens. But I'd like to make sure that people's thoughts are really considered in this. Thanks.
Thank you, Richard. Any other members of the public wishing to address the counsel this evening? Under Mayor's report, I have just one item for you. A appointment, reappointment to the Washego Cemetery Board, Mr. Wilbur Smith, to serve through March 2014. Wilbur's position is up this month. We did post the opening itself and got one other response in there besides Wilbur's, which was withdrawn before the appointment coming open. So I would ask for your confirmation of Mr. Smith to serve on the cemetery board through 2014.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to confirm Wilbur Smith as a member of the Washego Cemetery Board for the next, is it a three-year commission?
Three years.
For the next three years.
Second. Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Counsel discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Counsel comments? Anyone on counsel? John?
Couple of things. One is, would it be possible, because we are moving towards the finale on the sign ordinance, would it be possible to put out a little effort, Mr. Mayor, to maybe have staff take the tape and put it on a thumb drive, somehow do a transfer, so that we can all have copies of the planning commission meetings for the sign ordinance, so we can kind of hear where their mindsets are? I think that would be really helpful if we could have that somehow in a file.
Sure.
The other thing I want to discuss was, the lady who was here earlier kind of touched on it. I would like for the city to consider having Ms. Dietzmann come to our next workshop meeting to discuss the information that was brought forward tonight. I would also like for us to consider, if we feel action is merited, that we do look for a resolution for the first meeting in April to basically voice our opinion on this matter. Not whether or not the merits of light rail are, you know, the yea or nay, but rather, should there be a public vote this year? Because if this vote does not take place this year, chances of the vote happening in 2012 will only be in the city of Vancouver, and we will not get a say. It is important for us to have a vote this year, as they have been planning since September.
We can certainly make that request. Do you want to talk to her just about light rail, or would you like her to come prepared for?
Just come prepared, basically, I just want to know, you know, is this information true that if there's not a vote today, we get cut out of the vote in 2012? And basically, then we're paying, we're stuck paying the bill, but we have no voice to be able to vote on whether or not we want light rail.
And I don't know, I don't know the answer to the question of if it happens in 12, are we in the vote or not in the vote? I know the discussion that has happened at the mayor's level of the county, and I think you may have seen in the paper where Mayor Levitt has suggested another option, which is just the city of Vancouver voting on the issue, would be taxable only to the city of Vancouver, would not be taxable to the other, the other residents, whether they're in the underincorporated county or in the other jurisdictions, so.
I appreciate that. The fact is, I think with light rail, I think C-Trans will be running it, that that will be under their jurisdiction. And if that's the case, we all still pay into C-Trans. So basically, though that money may not be coming directly out of us, we will be subsidizing it.
I don't, yeah, let's have, let's have Linda address those if she can. I don't see C-Trans taking over TriMet.
No, I'm not saying they're taking over, but I'm saying in Clark County, I believe, is under their jurisdiction, because when they came and gave us that talk, I think it was September, light rail was in this plan to be voted on coming up this year. That was part of, I remember Councilman Shoemaker talking to them quite sternly about that. So.
We will make the request of Councilman Dietzmann. Any other items from counsel?
If, if we're going to have a workshop session on C-Trans, I'd really like to know what the two tenths of one cent, two, two tenths of a percent would be spent on.
Is that the one for the buses?
Yeah, but in some detail. Could C-Trans come and talk to us about that? Or at least request that they do?
Yep.
And kind of along with that, get, get a sense of what the vision of C-Trans is for service and for the next few years.
Do you want something other than what Mr. Hamm gave us in his presentation a few months ago?
An update on that would be helpful.
Okay. Got him. We'll try and incorporate him into the same meeting. Other items from counsel? Michael?
Mr. Mayor, I rise with sadness at the recent actions of, or alleged actions of some of the members of the council. On March 9th, Mr. Mayor, you sent an email to all the members of the council, and this email was about an upcoming meeting, which was a meet and greet with businesses and to discuss the East Street improvements. In that email was the following quote, "I am requesting that council members not attend this meeting, other than Councilmember Morris, who raised the issue." And if I understand correctly, the reason behind this requesting that no other council members attend the public, attend this meeting was to avoid this being a public meeting according to the definition under the Open Public Meetings Act, or OPMA. I respect this and assume that the rest of the council would as well. And for those not familiar with the OPMA, a public meeting takes place when the council has a quorum and is discussing or deliberating city business, and this would definitely fall under that. In this context, it's irrelevant whether the meeting in question was or was not open to members of the public or whether they were invited. A public meeting of the council happens whenever four members of the council are present and discuss city business. And when I heard that not only did Councilmember Morris attend, but other council members as well, you can imagine my surprise. I did not see any emails indicating that the prohibition on council attendance was changed. And regardless of the explanations or excuses that are offered after the fact, I suggest to my fellow council members that in the future, in order to avoid the appearance of partisanship or favoritism or political campaigning or whatever it may be, that when the mayor broadcasts to the council that other council members not show up, that we honor his request. And I submit to my fellow council members that if, if, I was not at the meeting, but if what happened was other council members did show up, it, it breeds a certain amount of distrust, and I yield the floor.
That, Michael, I apologize, there was an objection by a council member that either no council members attend or all the council members attend. My response to the council member was, I'll either ask Councilman Morris not to attend, or I may ask and invite the Public Works Committee to attend, which is ultimately what I ended up doing that weekend. So it wasn't, wasn't a case where council members showed up on their own and went against the wishes. I actually put it out to the Public Works Committee, which I believe this project falls dead under, in order to be there and listen to the concerns of the constituents as well. I certainly, I certainly understand that there are some council members who, you know, would like to take issue with that. I know I spoke with Councilmember Shoemaker today, and, and his, his comment was, he wished that, that individuals from the other side had been there or that we hadn't heard just, had just one side of the council there versus the other view. You know, to me, the East Street project is not a political potato. It has nothing to do with elections. It has to do with the project that the city has going. I believe that Councilman Russell and Councilmember McDaniel were the two council individuals who selected that committee of the Public Works Committee. I don't believe it was a partisan choice on their part of who was on that committee, but if there's a council committee that that, that discussion is most relevant to, I have a hard time believing that it's not the Public Works Committee.
And I completely understand the, the logic behind it. The, the thing that I would urge for future decisions along the times, if a similar situation comes up, is I would urge that a, some, just some note be sent out to the entire council saying, hey, here's the change of plans, planning on having this, this committee meet, rather than have it come down to a question about whether or not it was changed for one reason or another, after that was the last word that was sent to everybody. Because certainly, it, with the original request in the email that no other council members show up, so we don't have an OPMA violation, there was always the wiggle room and the assumption, from what I could read into it, that, you know, you can't bind us to not show up, and if we did show up, then we have to either, you know, flip a coin to see who leaves, if there's a quorum, or, you know, some, some awkward silence or something along those lines. So I read it as, well, you know, you take your chances if you do show up, and there might not be enough room, and so on and so forth. But it, just to avoid that in the future, if we already know there are three, going to be three council members coming, then that makes it pretty clear that, you know, really, we really shouldn't be showing up. And, you know, at that point, we pretty much know what, what the game is. And that's the reason why I ask, is because it just was a little indefinite to hear two different versions before of what we expected and afterwards of what did happen, so.
Understood.
Thank you.
John?
Yeah, and I would also suggest too, I mean, as a member of the Public Safety Committee, that maybe the Public Safety Committee should have been there, because this is a public safety issue as well. Or maybe the Community Development Committee should have been there, because this is a community development. I really felt, Mr. Mayor, that the OPMA was used to keep council members out.
And you would be correct, you would be incorrect. You would be absolutely 100% incorrect.
Okay, well, I requested to you to allow us all to attend.
No.
And that was denied.
Absolutely.
That's using OPMA to keep us away.
No, that's not. John, this, this meeting was not a city council meeting, was never intended to be, and I am not going to allow that project or any other meetings that this city holds to become this political thing, because we have elections coming up.
Mr. Mayor, you made it political by keeping us out. Okay?
No.
And I would also say too.
I disagree with that 100%.
The money that was used for this, that we pay our consultants for, was for public outreach, yet the public was not invited.
I.
So, again, there's another.
I disagree with you completely. If you don't believe that businesses in this city and the businesses that are most impacted by that business are not the public, then you need to look at your definitions again.
No, you're twisting what I said.
No, I'm not.
For the public not to be invited to this meeting, when they were using money for public outreach, is somewhat of a conflict.
I don't believe so. Okay. There's no additional money being used for that meeting, nor was there, intended to be. You know, again, I believe that you've got some individuals, yourself included, council member, who are wanting to make this into a political issue, and it's not going to happen.
No, no, I think your statement to me in the email was, oh, I cannot invite Mr. Morris, but I'll invite the Public Safety Committee. You really won't like that.
You're correct.
And as a matter of fact, Councilwoman McDaniel had told me that you told her through email that none of the council members were coming. Then all of a sudden, three of them show up. So I'm just trying to figure out where you're at on this issue, Mr. Mayor.
I think where I'm at, I've explained a number of times. I put out the initial email. You wanted to decide that that was going to be a political game and wanted either everybody or nobody. And, John, I'll take your suggestions under, under advisement. That doesn't mean that I have to live with them, nor am I going to enact them.
No, you're right, maybe we should have.
So somewhere in there, Jennifer sent me an email, and asked, oh, what are we doing? And I said, Councilmember Morris has already said that he did not need to attend.
Well, you know, maybe since it takes.
Which was a correct statement.
Since it takes count, four council members to declare a public meeting, maybe next time something like this comes out, the council should go ahead and enact a public meeting.
And why should you need to do that, council member? Why would you need to do that?
If you're going to lock us out of the meeting, then maybe we should.
Okay, are there any other comments from council members?
I have a comment, actually, just to clear up a little misconception on what you said about the email that you sent me. You did indeed say, Mr. Mayor, that Rod Morris would not be attending the meeting, and then, in fact, he did attend the, the meeting, and you invited, at the last minute, the Public Works Committee, is that correct?
Correct.
At the last minute, okay, so, none of us were made aware that the Public Works Committee had been invited to the meeting, so that.
None of the, none of the four of you are on the Public Works Committee?
No, I'm saying that, that we didn't have any sort of email, no email went out and let anybody know, that's what I'm saying. The last email I got was that there's not going to be a cost to the city, and that Rod was not going to attend the meeting, and that was the last email that I received, FYI. Before, a few minutes ago, you, you said that you had sent out an email saying that the Public Safety Committee, or the Public Works Committee was going to be attending, but you didn't send out an email like that, I didn't receive.
I don't believe I said that, because I didn't send out an email.
And also, I'm speaking just a moment, please. Now, we did conclude at the workshop that there will be funds spent on this particular meeting, because the engineers and the contractors will bill, they have billable hours for the time they came and spoke to the business owners, and so, yes, there is going to be some public funds spent, and I believe you said that it was going to come out of public outreach funds for the project. Now, to me, I'm confused. Public outreach means that the public would be invited to some sort of an outreach event. However, no public was invited, it was indeed a private meeting, so that's my confusion.
I guess you would have to ask Councilman Russell what public outreach is, because I didn't use those, those words, those are his words. You know, we have consultants on this, we've got contractors on this.
No, I believe the contractor that came, the, the person, I believe from Wallace Engineering that came last Monday night, said that public outreach funds would be used to pay, basically, their fees, their available hours. That's, that was the question I asked, I believe, that's what it was. I'll have to check the minutes, but.
Don't know.
Okay. Well, I'm on the Finance Committee, so I'll see the bill.
Any other comments from council? Okay.
Hearing none, we have an executive session scheduled for labor negotiations, should last approximately thirty minutes or less, with no action following the session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have a recess. In that case, why don't we start the executive session at seven o'clock, straight up? Thank you.
I'll be leaving at seven fifteen, I've got to get an appointment.
Sean, are we doing it here?